Good evening, everyone. We're having a little bit of a sloppy start tonight. And we're on the air. So with that, welcome to the September 7th, 2016 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. My apologies for those watching on cable TV. We had a little bit of a miscue on the start. However, with that, let's start with the approval of minutes. We have two of them tonight, July 20th, 2016. And I note that Rosalee, you and Danny, I believe, were out that night. So is there a motion from this side of the dais?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of July 20th, 2016 as read into the record.
Second. It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes 3-0-2. I'm taking for granted you abstaining.
I'm staying.
Next up is the minutes from the meeting of August 3rd, 2016. And I know Matt and Lloyd were out that night, so it would be this side of the dais for that one. Is there a motion, please?
Yes, I move that we accept the -- who was the number?
Oh, I'm sorry. August 3rd, 2016.
The minutes from August 3rd, 2016 meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
One abstention.
All right, that passes 4-0-1. And I don't have the formal announcement, but I will say that Phil is joining us on the dais this evening, as not all commissioners are present. So whatever needs to be entered into the record for that, please do that. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. One is AFP-7391-2016 and AFP-7400-2016. Is there a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read into the record this evening.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that passes unanimously. And that takes us to our sign permit agenda. First up tonight is Sign-11945-2016. Streamside apartment signs at 340 North Summit Avenue in the CBD zone. This is a permanent identification sign approval. I'm presenting from staff is Jasmine Fortes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. These applications are for the Streamside Apartment signage located at 340 North Summit Avenue. This application comes before the planning commission because the permanent identification signs are over 24 square feet. In Section 24-211, subsection G3, signs in excess of 24 square feet must be approved by the planning commission. All the permits will be reviewed concurrently, but at the end, three motions will be required. So once again, the applicant is requesting the approval of three permanent identification signs that are over 24 square feet in size. All the proposed signs will incorporate the updated branding and image for the apartment complex. So the first sign is Sign-11945, identified as Sign A. It's going to be 39 square foot, single face, non-illuminated. And it's going to be located at the Gerard Street. And it's going to be -- so the setbacks and the location is going to be similar to the existing sign that's there. The next sign is Sign-11946, Sign B. And this is going to be 39 square feet, double face and externally illuminated sign. It's going to be located along North Summit Avenue. Also make note that the existing sign is currently located in the public right-of-way. And Steph has talked with the applicant, so the applicant has moved the sign over onto the property. And then we noticed, the reason for this sign is because when you go up north of North Summit Avenue, this is the only sign you can see. You can't see the main signage for the apartment complex. So they need the sign.
Sure.
And so for the last sign is Sign-11950, Sign F. And this is going to be 30 square feet, single face, non-illuminated sign. And this is going to be located right at the entrance of the apartment complex. The sign's going to be similar setback in location of the existing sign. And it is the only visible sign going south on North Summit Avenue. The applicant has submitted a justification letter for the larger signs. And the reason for the larger signs, because they may know that the existing signs there hasn't posed any problems in the past, and then they want to make the apartment complex stand out and have people know where the location is.
And just to clarify that, so they exceed the current sign ordinance, but they're larger than or about the same as the existing one?
They're slightly smaller.
Slightly smaller, okay. And would you mind going back to just one of the ones from at a stone base? I think there were two of them that were like that. Just I just want to clarify one other thing, if you wouldn't mind.
This one?
That's fine.
Okay.
So when calculated in the area, are you just counting the lighter colored piece of the plaque with the logo on it and the whitish field? Or are you including all of the blue field arrow and everything else with the area?
We're including everything, and the base is included in the sign.
Oh, including the base?
The base?
Yes.
The stone?
Oh, okay.
Okay. That's interesting.
Yeah.
How did you know that's what you did that? The actual text.
That's the definition of my definition. It's from the ground up.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I have a technical question. Just clarification on the swoosh, I guess you would call it, or the wave. Is that considered an icon, or is that considered just part of the lettering? I mean, how does that, Jasmine?
It's not a person, vegetable, or product.
Not a product, that's how we define it. Okay. Or vegetable.
Well, we're walking a fine line.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
I'll bump to any questions you may have.
All right. Any other questions for Jasmine? Is there anyone in the audience that is here to comment on this application? Okay. All right. Recommendation is?
So staff recommends approval of Sign-11945, Sign-11946, and Sign-11950-2016 based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report finding in compliance with Section 24-211, subsection G3 of the city sign ordinance.
Okay. And the only thing we're qualifying in this is the size, the area. The height is within the restrictions or within the guidelines, the ordinance, right? So it's just the gross area or the area of the space itself, not the height or anything else. All right, any comments, concerns on the proposal?
No. I mean, given that it's including, you know, that foundation, which I didn't think, you know, the footing, I'm fine with this. I have no problems with this moving forward.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Pretty straightforward. I'm happy to see whatever improvements happen on residences in the city. I think that's a good improvement, a good add. So I think with that, we're ready for a motion. Tell me again, you want three?
Three separate ones, right?
Yes.
Three separate motions?
So let me just make sure we're clear about that. I see two -- am I misreading this? There's two application numbers.
There's three.
Four, six, four, and five.
It's a second line, there's a second line.
Forty-five, forty-six, fifty?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's offset. I'm really looking past. Thank you. Okay. So is there a motion, please, on the first one, which I believe, if I have it right, is four, five?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendations, move that we grant Sign-11945-2016, finding it in compliance with Section 24-211G of the city sign ordinance.
Second. It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes unanimously. Next up would be four, six.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, based on the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, move that we grant Sign-11946-2016, finding it in compliance with Section 24-211G of the city sign ordinance.
Second. It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. And then five, zero.
Mr. Chairman, once again, based on the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, I move that we grant Sign-11950-2016, finding it in compliance with Section 24-211G of the city sign ordinance.
I second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jasmine.
That takes us then to the sign, next sign permit application, and that's Sign-12055-2016, Robertson Park Youth Center at 801 Rabbit Road in the RA low-density residential zone. And again, a permanent identification sign. Looks like Caroline Seiden is stepping up to present. Thank you.
Good evening. This application is for a permanent identification sign at Robertson Park Youth Center, which is shown here on the aerial on Rabbit Road. The youth center is right here, right across the street from the Public Works Building and off of Quince Orchard Boulevard. And it is before you for the same section of code on the Streamside signs, which is that it is larger than 24 square feet permanent identification sign. And the application is for a sign simply that has the Gaithersburg logo and says youth center. The letters are 24 inches high, non-illuminated on one face of the building.
So I guess the tree's a vegetable.
It's a city logo.
I believe we've approved that a couple times already.
There actually is already a city logo on the building that was approved as part of the building itself. And so this is in addition to that logo. You can't really see it very well in this photograph. It's behind there. That's about the sum of it.
Okay, great. Any questions?
No.
No? Is there -- remind me again, it's how large, what's the area?
It's 51 square feet.
Fifty-one versus the?
Versus 24 is what is allowed without planning commission approval.
So is there a need, I guess it's setback from Rabbit Road a little bit, so that you can see it?
Yeah, the building is setback. There's parking lot in front of it.
Anyone here in the audience to comment on this? Okay. Recommendation, please, come on.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant Sign-12055-2016, finding it in conformance with Section 24-211G of the city zoning ordinance.
Very good. Any concerns with this one?
No, looks good.
Fairly straightforward? Okay, good, thanks. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, based on staff reports, findings, and recommendations, that we grant Sign-12055-2016, approval, finding it in conformance with Sections 24-211 per N-G of the city zoning ordinance.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that takes us to our courtesy review agenda. Well, there's one of those, and it's for the Old Town Park Plaza, AFP-7404-2016. And Jasmine, you're up again, right?
Musical chairs.
Good evening again. Staff is before you to discuss two applications, an amendment to final site plan AFP-7404-2016 and the final forest conservation plan EMV-7338-2016. Subject property is a 1.2 acre lot and is located at the corner of South Summit Avenue and East Diamond Avenue. The property is zoned central business district and is within the Old Town District. The property currently contains two buildings, the Java Junction Mark Station Building and the Community Museum. The property also contains a Bud Car, a caboose, and a locomotive car, and a surface lot, which is excess from East Diamond Avenue and South Summit Avenue. To the south of the property, there is an existing Maryland Historical Trust easement. And some of the work that's going to be done in the plaza is going to go into that easement, and it's going to require approval from the Maryland Historical Trust later on before new construction will happen. The Java Junction Building and the Community Museum is currently listed as in the National Register of Historic Places and locally designated as historic. The applicant is requesting work at the Old Town Plaza. Since the amendment to final site plan application will be reviewed as courtesy review, but the forest conservation plan will remain subject to Chapter 22 of the city code and must be approved by the planning commission. So what I'm doing is going to change our attention to Sharon Disick, who's with the City Gaithersburg Office of Economic Development, is going to go over the timeline of the project.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
In 2014, the mayor and city council established an ad hoc committee whose purpose was to study the creation of improved public space at the southeast corner of South Summit and East Diamond Avenues. Representatives included business owners, residents, and city staff. The committee was charged with reviewing existing conditions at the site and the many previous designs for the site. In fact, the earliest we found were 2003. Identifying current cultural activities at the site and assessing the area for potential enhanced activities, considering the site's nearby historic elements, as well as the potential to incorporate the park into a future development of the neighboring 315 East Diamond Avenue site called the Fishman Site. Gathering input on potential improvements or modifications to the site. Consulting with the Gaithersburg Police Department on safety and security issues related to renovation of the park. And assisting city staff in the development of a request for proposal to be used in the selection of a landscape, architecture, or similar firm, which would deliver a site design based upon the committee's recommendations. At the conclusion of the committee's work, the group issued a report that covered style preferences, plaza uses, and parking. Also included was a key statement from the committee related to the goal of place making, which defined the conceptual framework for the project. This was, "To maximize the plaza's location, heritage, existing features, and current functions, the committee members agreed that an overarching theme for the design should be that of railroad transportation. By using this particular theme, the existing assets and constraints, particularly the frequent rail traffic which interrupts auto and pedestrian access, become components of a transit-oriented destination." Tonight, Steve Torgerson of A. Morton Thomas is here to present the design that evolved via input from the Old Town Park Plaza Ad Hoc Committee.
Thanks. Great, welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here. So this is a illustrative site plan of the overall site, including the tree canopy that is proposed. And I will flip to the next drawing to actually walk you through it, because the tree canopy tends to block a few things. So this is the site plan with the trees in kind of a line weight. And I will use the pointer to maybe, not go too farward, to step the, to step everyone through the process. This is East Diamond Avenue at the top here. This is South Summit Avenue, and this is the intersection. This is a curb ramp, and there is one that exists for pedestrians. We are proposing a sign to be here at the front that would identify the site. Here at this juncture is the fountain and a larger plaza space. Here we have planting the buffers from South Summit Avenue for the plaza, and it also acts as bioretention for stormwater management. Shade structures with benches, additional benches here, more shade structures with benches here. This is called the train alley here. This is the Mark Station. This is the existing locomotive. This is the existing caboose. And this is the museum. This location right here is the location of the future Bud Car. The Bud Car now is off to the side here. This is the parking lot, and this is the future development for the Fishman parcel. And so I will step you through in greater detail each of these components. So the fountain plaza is envisioned as a space and a place for the community to rally and to come. It focuses as a place during the summer and the spring and the fall where a fountain can run, where the community and visitors can interact with water. However, it's important to note that this place is designed so that it can be used for a number of different activities. The water can be turned off, and from that point, it can be used as a larger restaurant eating space. It could be a place for people to relax, a place for events, a place for small concerts, lots of different opportunities. The hardscape for the place. Hardscape here in the orange is along the sidewalk, and that hardscape would mimic the existing hardscape that falls along Summit Avenue. The brick pavers out in the rest of the area here would actually mimic the brick that is currently around the site. And there's several types of brick, but this is the more historic appearing brick. And then the fountain itself would have a little bit more of a contemporary brick, and that would be in this red area. So the parking terrace, the reason that we're calling it a parking terrace and not just a parking lot is because we envision this space as a place for cars to park, but a space that can easily be closed off and other activities could happen into it to expand its use. Items like having a farmer's market or having other types of venues happen in the space are possible. It has been designed so that tents can be actually set up in the parking lot. And even in this area, we've removed the wheel stops so that a tent could be placed in this area. Seating. Seating happens around the perimeter, and I promise that it does not happen right here. This red mark right here really should go here. So seating happens on the perimeter of the fountain area itself and provides lots of opportunity for people to sit and rest. And these benches come both backless, so some of them without backs, some of them with backs and armrests. And a number of them will be accent lit, so that it kind of highlights the area. And then there is one other bench that will be installed here at the bus stop. There are two pedestrian bridges. These pedestrian bridges really allow access from the parking lot terrace over to the fountain plaza space through the bioretention here and here. And here's a representative image of what that would look like. The artistic screen. Right now, the back of the Mark Station has two air conditioners, and they are somewhat screened by evergreen planting. We propose to help save space and to reduce on maintenance, to go ahead and use this as a way to showcase the space. And so we proposed a screen to help hide the air conditioners, but also to create kind of some interpretation of what this place actually used to do. And so here are some images of, historic images of the train station, including a train here that's mirrored on both sides, so that would be seen here or here. And then along the front, this is a historic image of the train station, and then one from a different view. And then this is the historic logo for the B and O. There's an opportunity to add shade structures into the project. The shade will eventually be there when the trees get there. However, we propose to add some shade structures in. However, right now, they're being put in as add alternates to make sure that we can meet our budget. So lighting is broken up into different scales, and I will walk everyone through it. This light right here is the light for the parking lot, and they are these red dots here. The lights here are for along the street in blue here and here. And we will update the lights to be LED, however, they will look similar to the lights that are on South Summit already. The orange lights here, this is a representation of that. And actually, what happens is these lights are mounted on top of the pole, and this light is then directed down into the space. So those are the orange blocks. And then these dots right here, those are two existing lights that are kind of the Home Depot style lights to help provide some existing security. We're proposing to remove that style and to put in something that will go into the background a little bit more. And then finally, along the front of the train station here in yellow is this light. And this light will provide additional security lighting for the front of the building or the back of the building, depending on how you access it. But it will be tucked in under the eaves so that you won't be able to see it. This is the train alley. The train alley is proposed to highlight the museum that is there and the train cars that are part of this space. And the proposal is to be able to show a little bit of track and interplant that similar to what's been shown on the High Line, which is where these images are taken from. Stormwater management is located here, here, and in this area. And we designed the stormwater management carefully in collaboration with the city to make sure that it becomes part of the site, that it is as shallow as we possibly can make it while still retaining the water. And then coming and planting it beautifully so that it helps to augment and highlight the space. And the planting palette was put together to make sure that there was color throughout the entire growing season, from early spring, starting with bulbs until late fall, and then into the winter months. These are the trees for the site and the different species. Selections were made to choose species that don't drop large amounts of fruits or nuts or things like that onto the plaza space and will help to really create a central focus within the city. And then this is the part of the forest conservation in which trees we're actually counting for forest conservation. There are the eight trees shown in green with .15 acres required, .18 acres provided, and it equates to 800 square feet of tree canopy. And that is the end of the presentation. Great. Do you have questions?
I do. Do you have questions? Go ahead.
First question off the top. Any provisions for security cameras? You had security lighting, but security cameras to protect against vandalism and things like that?
That has not been discussed, however, that is something that I can bring back and add in the discussion as we move forward to the last 100 percent of construction. I think that one of the things to deal with with security cameras is making sure that there's actually a way to monitor. And that process is sometimes bigger than just a site can deal with.
We've got?
We already have security. There's a security camera in that area already. There's one on the train station, and there's also one nearby on East Diamond Avenue.
No, my concern is that we've attempted to put in occasionally fountains in different neighborhoods, and they've been vandalized to the point where they've actually shut down some of the fountains. So I'm concerned about that aspect at this point. That's my first. Go right ahead.
Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, before we continue, just in the interest of full disclosure, I sat on the, in my prior life, I sat on the ad hoc committee, and I've had the opportunity to review these plans as they've developed.
We will blame you later. Thank you. That's fine. I don't think there's any conflict of interest there.
I didn't think so, but thanks for saying it.
Thanks for mentioning it. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes. My initial reaction is that this is a great plan, but it's rather small. So I was very delighted to hear that the parking lot is sort of reversible. Have you considered a low curb or such a flush treatment that will make it seem more like a space rather than just hanging around in a parking lot? My reaction is, this is hopefully-- My reaction is this is hopefully, as we looked at our downtown developing, we don't want people to get married to the idea of a parking lot and actually turn away the opportunity of an actual plaza because we know that the fountain is going to be utilized, but there's other uses that could take place in that location. And I think that we should encourage them.
Yeah, that sounds good. We could also discuss that. There are definitely two sides of this parking lot where that type of a curb would be successful. I think that the only thing that we would want to look at is to make sure that we are providing a way that vehicles are not going to extend their parking space.
Absolutely.
But we could definitely discuss that as we move forward and that's a fairly easy change.
Absolutely. And so I guess as you finish the presentation, I included those four trees as part of your square footage of the forest conservation. I was going to suggest that we perhaps, that you perhaps move those and that will actually facilitate the parking aspect of it so it would make it even more open for the, for it to be used for another purpose. However, I'm perfectly fine with the trees being there. I just think that if you find a different treatment to protect them from cars backing into them, I think that's all that I would suggest, something that would potentially be removable. Because I think the idea of it extending, it's definitely where I believe will grow.
One of the items about the curbs is that we do need them for stormwater management, for directing the water into the drains and things like that.
Absolutely. But there's...
Go ahead. But we'll certainly look at that.
I recommend looking into a book called Light Imprint. It's all about curbing gutter and how to treat with stormwater management and the different density levels.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, it's actually a fun new trend that cities are starting to do is to really start to look at these, at streetscapes as being a true multimodal space. And some cities are actually starting to say cars and pedestrians get full access basically of this space and actually are turning those curbs down so that they are still there a little bit, but not so six inch prominent.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll jump in. I'll actually piggyback on that. So in the course of doing that, I, you know, there are paving details too that are more pedestrian friendly than the traditional asphalt and painted stripes. Are you looking at something that's more about, you know, pavers and maybe an offsetting color paver for the striping instead of, you know, just paint on the asphalt? Is that part of this discussion at all or...
Right now, our budget is running it with asphalt.
Okay. So it's right now it's a budget thing. I love your bridges over the, over the stormwater, the bioretention. I think that's a really cool detail. Does that happen on the Diamond Avenue side of the parking lot? So I know one really strong pedestrian pattern right there now is that people park in the lot and then cross across the street. I realize it's not at the intersection, but just kind of calling as it is to go to the businesses there. And so there's always some natural paths off of the parking to hit the sidewalk right adjacent. Are you doing those bridges there also or is that only into the plaza?
Right now, that is only into the plaza space. We had considered a little bit of doing something similar here across the bioretention in this area and it was, it was looked at and said, hey, there's lots of other ways to get up to East Diamond Avenue and ultimately...
What's that?
Shovel the people where they go to be.
Ultimately, the desire is that pedestrians go where pedestrians are supposed to go with a busy traffic.
Not true. Well, I'll tell you why. Bioretention is showing up a lot of places around the city, which is really a great thing. And if you look at some of the parking lots that are beginning to incorporate it, what you're beginning to see now are people cutting through, they're wearing paths down and up, assuming it's not wet when they're doing it. It's sometimes wet too. So it's just something to start keeping an eye on because it's a detail we haven't had to deal too much with and it's out there. I'm seeing it and I know it's going to be, it's the old adage about just you pave the worn path, right? I mean, because people will go where they go. But I think it's something worth looking at. It's a minor thing at this point, but just keep an eye on it. The alt add for the shade structures, so I respect the budget constraints and that makes perfect sense, but let's say it can go forward in a year or two, if there's budget in the CIP or somewhere to put some shade structures in. Does building and finishing it then preclude ever doing the shade structures or could they be added later? Is it a detail that's relatively easy to, to, I don't know whether it includes brackets in an existing foundation footing or whatever it is, but do you think it's something that could be planned for in the future or should be planned for in the future?
Yeah, we, it could go in in the future and we will go and discuss and look at actually providing footings now in that process so that the footings are already in place, the cost of doing the footings is a miniscule amount of the overall structure. The only constraint is is just making sure that they are sized correctly to make sure that, that what goes in in the future doesn't tip over in the future.
Good point. Go ahead.
I mean, my only comment on the shade structures is I, you know, I think without them on day one, I think they add a whole lot of life and character and quality to the space, especially seeing as how on day one, the trees are not going to be 15-year-old mature trees. I would strongly encourage the city to do everything we can to find the money to put them in on day one. I think this, like Sharon said at the beginning, this park has been going through multiple design iterations for the better part of the last, you know, fifteen years.
Three generations.
I have, I don't have a ton of confidence that if we put some footings in and say, oh yeah, we'll add them in the future, that they will get added in the future. So that would be one, my one comment is to strongly encourage us to do it day one.
You were talking about the screens having some thematic art or some, something going on with it. Is that in conjunction with art in public places at all? Is that, is that a part of the mix or is this, have they been involved or are you thinking about involving them? Is this an opportunity for them to...
We had a staff representative serve on the committee.
Yeah. No, what I'm getting at is like, is that, I guess it's a fine line, but that element of the plan or that element of the park, do you consider that an art thing or is it more of a, of an interpretive, almost exhibit kind of follow-up on some of the plaques that are already there? What's the, kind of the intent?
More of an interpretive.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that there's always that line where it's great to be able to reach across the lines and I think that this is something where it's kind of in that, that middle zone. But we were looking at it more of on the interpretive side.
Okay, so more literal, less artistic.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
My one question on the screen is one of scale and, you know, I've seen some of these perforated metal panel art pieces before. And at what, at what distance from the screen do you actually perceive the image? Is this something that you need to be 20 feet back to really view or if you're five feet from it, is it just going to look like a bunch of dots? I've seen, I've seen installations that go both ways. So that's, that's my only comment is where it is, a lot of the people, it's along one of the main entry points into the plaza if you're coming up Summit Avenue. So a lot of people are going to be walking, you know, five feet past it. And if it's not at the right resolution, the value of it is lost on those people. So that's just a caution or a comment.
Yeah, thank you. We'll look into it to make sure that that scale is correct.
I just have one quick question about the entrance. Is there, is there some sort of special treatment at the entrance to close it off or we just put it just a, one of those horseshoe?
Are you talking about this space here?
No, no. The entrance to the parking lot, right there. Yeah, what, is that, there's some special treatment there or...
Right now, it is a standard crosswalk.
Okay.
Is, is this, is what you're seeing there. And, and that is, our understanding is that that is the type of crosswalk that the city is going towards for their crosswalks, so.
Okay.
It's the, we've been using it for over a year, I think, but we have limited lands before.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the presentation? All right, sure. Step on up. Mr. Day?
My name's Clark Day, 26 Walker Avenue. Been a resident of the city for a little over 10 years. It's really nice to see something coming to fruition in Old Town. My understanding is that it's even funded. We saw a revitalization of Constitution Gardens and the city, you know, got a committee together just like they did for this project and it's, it's a wonderful improvement and I'm sure that this is going to also be a wonderful improvement for, right in the heart of Old Town. Just got a couple of comments. The scale of the examples that are shown for the water feature and particularly I kind of smiled to myself when I saw the picture of the roller blader, you know, going for a long, a long cruise along the water area. I'm just curious, I mean, I've walked by there a lot, walked through there a lot and the scale looks like a grand plan and really the water thing would be like from here to the corner of this room. And I just, am I off base with that or is it, is it really a bigger space than I, that I envisioned in reality?
It is a bigger space than you, than it is in reality. And part of it is that the plaza space that is, we know it now, it ends about right here. The flagpoles sit right here, the bike rack sits about in this area and the parking lot starts right here. To be able to make this plan come to fruition, we actually had to look at a larger space. And so that is why a larger space actually functions. This, this is 70 feet long from here to here and so it is quite long. So, yeah.
It's almost as long as a ski rope.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Will the city maintain the plantings when it's all said and done?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I went to the Old Town Advisory Committee meeting that was referencing this project and there, I believe there was mention of there being Wi-Fi. Has there been any consideration for having Wi-Fi available in that area?
We had looked at the possibility of solar charges, chargers. There is Wi-Fi available via the cable companies. That's already there, so we are, we are not installing anything additional.
Oh, okay. All righty. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing shovels in the dirt.
Get your roller blades. All right, is there anyone else who would like to? Mr. Clifford.
I'm Jim Clifford. I own the buildings on the bookend of, opposite, the buildings on the opposite side of the park on Diamond Avenue, 300 to 304, which includes the historic bank building. And then on the other end, the old Gardner Stinson fueler home. And I've been sitting and looking out the windows at that park for 35 years. I'm very excited about the fact that you guys are focusing and the town is focusing on Old Town. I always feel like a stepchild sometimes when I see so much going on and so little on our side of the town. But I have to be pragmatic. I have to be an owner and I have to be a landlord and in that process, I have to ask a couple of questions that I want to be sure have been thought out. And one of the questions is, what is the net loss of parking in that space, realizing that these buildings are zero lot line, that they have no parking facilities themselves? And historically, that's always the way it's been. Realizing that the space that you're planning has been a cattle yard, it's been a lumberyard. It's always been part of the commerce of this town and basically what you're suggesting here is an attraction, but you're going to take an asset, a commerce, the parking basically, away from a critical part of town and we're struggling to make our town work. And this is a lost asset. This is not a gained asset as far as practical aspects of the business community. Can you tell me how many parking spaces you think have been lost?
Jasmine, do you have the count? There's currently 39 parking spaces and with the new park, it's going to be 21.
Okay, so it is a net loss, but not as significant. I very much appreciate the fact that you've kept so. Well, we've never really policed this area. We did, we did a number of years ago, maybe 20, but it's never really been actively regulated. Is that going to change under this plan with the lesser? In other words, 15-minute parking, hour parking, two-hour, whatever happens to be. We used to commute, used to compete with the commuters and we did solve that problem. But what are we, what's protecting us now with fewer parking lots, fewer parking spaces?
As far as enforcement of the duration for short term? I think we'll have to see how it works out. What we have done in the past is when we have issues with commuters, then we beef up enforcement, change the behavior pattern of the individuals. And after that, we can usually back off of enforcement.
Okay.
So we really have to see what happens to behavior. We're also looking at changes to the Fishman lot next door.
That'll be lost parking too, right?
What we're looking at is additional public parking.
Great.
Associated with the parking structure that would go on Fishman.
That'd be awesome. That'd be great. That's a good, that's a good solution. The other question I had is, is that, that's, is a congestion point in town and every once in a while, you get a rare opportunity to pick up a parking, or excuse me, a turn lane. And I don't see that there's any opportunity here to maybe pick up a turn lane. If you're coming from City Hall across the railroad tracks into town, that's, that's one of the choke points. And if there was an opportunity to have three lanes as you approach that red light, one to go left, one to go straight, one to go right, that would make a significant difference in the problem that we have at that intersection. It would have to come off this corner to do that. When I was trying to plan the block that the drugstore is on, we had every intention of doing that. We're going to put a turn lane there. We're going to push the buildings back and put a turn lane coming south so you could go right, straight or left. I'm just bringing that up. And if I have to leave, I'll leave. I've got a couple more points, I think, or...
Go ahead. There was some dialogue going on there, so I'll let you make your last couple of points.
Okay. So I, I don't know that that's ever been discussed or thought of.
It was discussed.
It was. And the concern is that it would queue back into the railroad track?
This, in fact, the analysis included a traffic study and we went back and forth. Trudy, do you remember the detail?
I think the issue is right, that where the train station is located, you just can't take anything off of that area and to, it would be too short of a queuing area.
Yeah. I'm sure that could be addressed in some way, but it certainly is one of those rare opportunities. I didn't want to have us all overlook and then go, ah, you know, we had that chance and we blew it when we, when we redid the park.
Well, we definitely didn't get that direction from the mayor and council when this was presented to them in April.
Do you think they thought that out?
Yeah. There was a lot of...
Why don't we take that comment back and kind of within a, one of the staff review, just take a look at what that actually means?
One last historical perspective and this is for the budgeters of this. If you talk to any of the old timers in town, they'll tell you the old scales that came with, that were, that were embedded in the ground in the parking lot there for the lumberyard are still there. So when you start to pull, when you start to pull up that asphalt, you're not going to like what you find.
That's only if you're standing on the scales.
But it's not, it's not going to be dirt. It's going to be the old, the old construction of that, of those scales, which are fairly large. There's a few people left in town that can tell you exactly what they look like and where they are. And I'll get Mike Morris in trouble and tell you, he's one of the guys that knows because he sat there and watched it happen and he knows exactly where all that is. Okay, one last concern is one in, one out of that parking lot. Based on what I've seen over the years, that's going to be a new mess, one in, one out. It's going to be a new mess. And if you only have to spend one hour at certain times of day watching people come in that parking lot now, and it's not too hard to project what that will look like when the time comes. Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks for comments. Anybody else? Kathy, welcome back.
Kathy Drizgula, 16 Walker Avenue. Good evening all. I'm sure most of you are aware of a song that starts about, with words about a long and winding road and it includes phrases about bringing me back to your door and leaves me standing here. That's kind of what this process has seemed to me. This project's been in the budget since 1999. It's had three different iterations that I remember. There might have been some on the side. This group in particular is probably aware of how many new neighborhoods, retail centers and gathering spaces have been created, mostly with private money, in the intervening years. But just think of how, how having this amenity 17 or more years ago could have enlivened the historic heart of the city if the project had moved forward the first time. Of course, the benefit is this plan is much better because it is designed... Of course, the benefit is, this plan is much better because it is designed to serve the public and its primary purpose, rather than be subservient to the previously hypothetical construction on the lot next door, which held it up and ended up with some strange designs along the way. So my main message to you is just, please, help, help it move forward. It is time to have this. This part of town deserves this kind of amenity, and obviously, you can make it better, but don't get in the way. And, no, they're two different things.
This just goes on, I think it's just beeped.
No. I know three minutes really well. I could do three minutes in my sleep. And the only other thing I will mention is, I know you got a letter about the bus stop, and the bus stop that is there serves people going towards Shady Grove Road. There is traffic that gets on there, I mean, towards Shady Grove Metro. So there are boardings there, but they would probably not be train commuters. They would get off at Washington Grove if they were going to go that way. And the bus stop being right next to the driveway, if there was a bigger structure, I think it would impede people's views of the traffic coming past the park, which, as, as Jim mentioned, it's already, can be difficult to leave that driveway. I know the driveway's been adjusted a little bit in the plan from the way it is now to make it function better, so I hope that helps, but, but thank you.
Great, thanks. And we won't get in the way.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Lenny, please.
Lenny Levy, 14 Supreme Court. Let me start by saying that I almost had a Pavlovian reaction sitting here tonight after hearing the planning commission chair for 10 years say, "We're ready for a vote", when John said, "All in favor," say, "Ah, you almost did."
We have 6-0 on the record.
Did that vote as an abstention? Anyway, I'm the chair of the Old Town Advisory Subcommittee. We have several members here tonight, plus, as Kathy said, you got a letter from Richard Arkin dealing with this. We did have a presentation made to us, which is the one Clark was referring to, and the committee enthusiastically heard the report, and we're all in favor of it. We just feel Old Town Gaithersburg, as Kathy said, needs some amenities to draw the citizens to Old Town, and we certainly think this will be a wonderful one. We're all in favor of it, and we hope it moves forward quickly.
Great. Thank you.
And I'm going to avoid the area until the scales are ready.
Then come back again. Don't avoid the planning commission meeting anymore. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Okay. All right, so where are we? Recommendation from staff or do you know?
Yes. So staff recommends that two motions are going to be made for this project. So the first motion is, staff recommends that the planning commission, planning commission based on the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation grant ENV-7338-2016, Old Town Park Plaza Final Forest Conservation Plan approval, finding it in compliance with Chapter 22 of the code with no conditions. And the second motion is, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, staff report, staff findings, and the staff recommendations grant AFP-7404-2016, Amendment to Final Site Plan Courtesy Review, finding it in performance with Section 24-170 of the city zoning ordinance with two conditions.
Sounds good. Let me just start the discussion real quick. I don't really want to suggest that we add any conditions or do anything to hold up progress. There were a couple of details I'd love to get into the record, and with concurrence or sort of fleshing out what these ideas are, the commission may be get you guys to look into it. I think the question about the potential for some historic artifact like the old scales, obviously, you'll find them if they're there, but, gosh, what an interesting opportunity, and I don't know what to do about it if you find them, but something to keep an eye on, right? But on the, on the ingress egress, I know that right now, the driveway width and the geometry around the turn radiuses are pretty tight, and if we do end up with just the one ingress egress, just be absolutely certain it does really flow well, and it doesn't cause issues coming off of either, off of Diamond or on, either, in or out to Diamond. There were three things that I think in the discussion I want to ask staff to look at a little more carefully, and I know budget's going to be, it's going to be all about the budget, and I don't want to hinder the project and not move forward, but I think, Phil, you mentioned the shade structure, we were talking about how the shade structure was probably a pretty important element of the hardscape ultimately. You were talking about place making, that sense of enclosure when the trees aren't mature yet, I think could be very important. So to whatever extent we can either get some or all of that as part of the first phase of the project, I'd love to see if there's a way for you to get that in, worked in there. I think on this question about the curbs, I would take it a step further, and if we really want to make the parking lot something that's transitional to a human space, a human place, some other, some other paving technique would really be appropriate. I don't know what the marginal differences and what options there are out there. There's everything from just texturing the asphalt to take it to something completely different with stone and other things. I don't know what's, what's out there and what opportunity there is, if there's any headroom in the budget at all, but I think a good, hard look at that, if the real intent is to turn the parking lot into a, into a plaza when, you know, there's a festival or there's some event, I think the paving is critical to making that work and some of that detailing. And then, the only other question I have, I guess, for the commission, is this idea of the interpretive, the imagery on the, on the railing. I get the sense we might be overplaying the train thing a little bit, and I know that sounds silly, because, but when you think about it, you've got a historic train station, you've got historic trains. We probably don't need an image of a train there, because you got the real thing, so maybe there's more to the story that can be told with that, whatever that might be, you know, something about the commerce that happened in the city, something about, maybe it's the stockyards that were there. Jim Clifford brought up a cow lot or something. You know, maybe it's references to that agrarian lifestyle in the city from, from way back. It's a little, one, once removed, but still connected to what the train station was about. And maybe you tip it a little in favor of the artistic and, you know, kind of, kind of get it a little more interesting that way. So it's just, it's sort of an idea that maybe, maybe you look at.
A picture of a cow tipping the scale.
Cow tipping. No, that's not what I'm suggesting at all. Please.
You know, we recently had a presentation from the Arts Commission, and they had some great programs about sculptures and just having different things showcased throughout the community, but I think that that might be a good joint venture perhaps, because I agree, I think that overplaying the train might be verging to the cliche.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think the, the idea of incorporating some of the art in public places with somewhere in the plaza is a great idea. I'm not sure the screen is necessarily the, the place for that, because, you know, it's a very specific thing, it has a very specific function it has to accommodate, but I totally agree with the comments about what goes on the screen maybe, we may be, we may be in train overkill.
Or leave it to the artists to figure it out.
That's possible. My suggestion was to be, to consult a little bit more with some of the different folks at the city museum, look through the city archives, and just broaden what we're looking at a little bit beyond trains, and see if there's some interpretive stuff we can do there for the whole site.
The reason I think that it's such an important piece and that it should be just highlighted is because as you stand on the, in the crosswalk and you look south, that's going to be your terminating point. So it definitely requires some sort of celebrating point, otherwise you're going to end up in utility. So it definitely requires that termination, but I think that a different treatment is perhaps needs a second look.
Very good. All right.
And I just wanted to address one more thing. I think the concerns about the parking, I think we have to look at the chair parking ratios and the fact, perhaps the people who will be bringing their kids to play in the water may not be the same people who are commuting, so I think we have to take into that, that into account when we look at it and shortening the amount of parking. I think we're serving two different crowds in two different times.
Mm-hmm. Good. All right, any other comments? Fantastic plan. Let's, let's do it. When is it, when is it in the, the schedule to start?
We're hoping that we'll have completed construction documents, let's see, mid-October, and then we'll go through the city procurement process, the hope being that we'll have selection of a contractor late winter, with construction start late spring, early summer.
Great. And what's, what's the timing on construction for this, do you think? Any sense?
We've talked four months.
Yeah, it's going to be four to six months to, to do the work. Fortunately, it's not tied to any structures, so I think that that really speeds up the process.
Are you accounting for the digging out of the scales?
We're actually filling in that area. Those scales are staying right where they are.
All right, very good. Any other comments? Okay, so Jasmine, you want two motions. You want a, a motion on the courtesy review, but then also a formal motion on approving the forest conservation plan, right? Which do you want first?
Forest. Forest conservation. Forest.
Okay. Is there, so, so with staff's recommendation that we approve the forest conservation plan, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, based on the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, we grant ENV-7338-2016, Final Forest Conservation Plan Approval, finding it complies with Chapter 22 of the code with no conditions.
Second.
It's moved in second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously as a courtesy review approval, or, excuse me, as a forest conservation. And next up is the courtesy review. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, I move that we grant AFP-7404-2016, Amendment to Final Site Plan Courtesy Review, finding it in performance with Section 24-170, the city zoning ordinance with two conditions.
Second.
It's moved in second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Let's go.
Thank you.
Best wishes with that.
Thank you very much. That's, that's a fantastic update. Okay. Then that takes us to our recommendation to Mayor and City Council, which is CTAM-7359-2016 Ordinance, Chapter 24, Article 12 of the city code, entitled Preservation of Historic Resources. And Chris Berger is presenting for staff. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. Just a quick overview, the planning commission, the planning commission and the mayor and city council had the joint public hearing on August 1st. No one testified. We have received one letter in support, which has been added to the record. The planning commission's record closed on August 22nd. Staff updated the draft ordinance in wake of discussion at the August 1st joint public hearing, and we seek your recommendation tonight.
Very good. Any questions for Chris? I think I wanted to just paraphrase what was going on. It was more of a housekeeping, a legal tidying up, if you will, of the ordinance as opposed to creating any new, new focus for the, for the historic preservation ordinance. I know that there's been a need to be clear about demolition, the process for demolition, the process for undesignation or de-designation, and, and the process for defining more clearly in the city anyway, what the hardship, hardship rules are.
Correct.
I don't think we're, we're suggesting that any of that becomes different than it was before, it just becomes more clearly stated for, for legal purposes. Is that, is that fair?
I bet it's entirely accurate.
Yeah, okay. Okay. There's any, any questions about the ordinance update?
No. No.
We're being asked, excuse me, we're being asked for a recommendation to Mayor and Council. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM-7359-2016 to Mayor and City Council.
Second.
In second, at all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much, Chris. The, the park committee's out there using their outdoor voices. And that takes us to our final formal agenda item, which is site plans, and there's tonight, SP-7390-2016 Fitzgerald Lake Forest Auto Mall, 904 Russell Avenue, the C2 Zone, and this is for facade improvements and new signage for existing Subaru and Hyundai building, final site plan. And Greg, Greg Mann from staff is presenting.
Good evening. This review is for application SP-7390-2016 for the Fitzgerald Lake Forest Auto Mall property. The subject property is located at 904 Russell Avenue and is Zone C2. The applicant is requesting approval for facade improvements to an existing sales building, and also seeking approval for new building and site signage. This application is the first submitted final site plan that is based upon concept site plan SP-7277-2016, which was approved by the planning commission on August 3rd of this year. As you may remember, the approved concept site plan included a variety of site improvements, including the construction of a new parking garage and parking lot, in addition to an existing showroom, and exterior facade improvements to both existing sales buildings. And here tonight to present the application is the applicant's architect, Michael Bruckwick.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jim, do you want to get us going?
All right, I can take a minute.
Just a minute. Three minutes?
You all remember, we were here a little while ago.
You know, Jim, you can sit and talk.
Well, just take a second. I'm James Clifford, the law firm of Clifford DeBilious, Boynton, and Hyatt in Old Town Gaithersburg, and we were here to show you the full picture last time we were here, and now we're back doing it in parts. This is the most important, timewise. This is manufacturer-required improvements that they want us to make to the facades of the, of the property. And so we're on Russell Avenue now, not, not up on 355, and we're looking at the Subaru and Hyundai, Hyundai, excuse me, Jack will correct me on that.
They'll get that all the time.
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to get these facades up to a manufacturer's requirements, and there's some signings involved in that. We have Mike Bruckwick, as you've already heard, with us, as well as, I want to get these names right, Mark Hume, who is our sign guy, Gelberg, and so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First of all, I would like to thank you all for having us. And this evening, I'd like to thank staff, as they have shepherded us along, and I think I want to emphasize that in the overall site plan development that you all may be familiar with, these are specifically facade renovations to this one building and some related signage that we're here for tonight, so that's what I'll talk about. I will refer to the building, and then my colleagues from Gelberg will talk about the signage. The slide that you see in front of you, you all may be familiar with the building that faces Russell Avenue. You may love sloping Eiffel in multiple layers, or you may not. If you love it, it's going away, and I'm sorry. It was of a style appropriate and interesting 20, 30 years ago when it was built.
Oh, good, a sense of humor, huh?
And no longer is. So as Jim said, yes, it is time to apply the Subaru and Hyundai brand images and brand materials. They are specific. When you see what you see in front of you, which is very nice silver, very nice slate tower, those are specifically required materials of Subaru. When you look at the Hyundai side and see what they call their shaped sky, which is a very nice bronze, sure, is a very nice bronze color and changes a bit in the light, that is the material they require. So, in the middle, right now, we have a simple white facade. Should point out that the entire facade, as you've noticed, the steps, we're not going to be any taller than the existing building. We're not adding in addition to the building. We're merely stripping down and simplifying what's there. So we're matching the parapet heights. You cannot see the rooftop mechanical equipment from the road. You will not be able to see that. We're keeping the existing glass and frames. We're going to dress up and all, you know, there you see that the building's nearly 300 feet long and approximately 160 feet wide. Here we have a combination, if you will, of the existing front facade, the new front facade in color, technical. The signage you see is a reference point that my firm created a while ago before that got specifically defined, so that is a placeholder. But following shortly, Gelberg will address that specifically. Around the sides and what would really be the back of the building, things that are not visible from the public way. In fact, this building not even visible from 355 due to the topography. We're painting the entire exterior of the building. The aluminum facade material wraps the side. The windows on the side remain the same as they are today. And so the service entrances that are closer to 355, those canopies will get a slight facelift with aluminum panels as well. And there I am to the signage. That's really the simple overview. I could address it more than that if you would like to. I can discuss the architecture. We can move the signage, whichever is more appropriate, next.
We're going to take it next. Any questions on the proposed facade changes? No? All right, why don't you keep moving?
Good evening. Again, we're part of the team that is preparing the signage for what will meet the brand requirements for the two dealerships that are specific to this particular, to this particular hearing. My first slide, I indicate where the various signs, and I have them dimensioned.
If you could just, just make sure to identify yourself too.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Mark Hume with Gelberg Signs, and we are providing this piece of it, as well as this piece of it as well as some permitting, moving forward. Um, and on, on my first slide, I indicated, uh, the dimensions of the signs. Uh, we very carefully, um, stayed within, uh, the limits of the code in terms of the amount of space that each of the signs can occupy versus the facade that they are located on. Um, the Fitzway sign, uh, which is the oval that will appear in the middle. Um, uh, the middle facade is, is, uh, red with white and it will be, uh, a translucent face which will be illuminated from behind. Um, on the Hyundai side, uh, there, it's a dark sort of the bronze, um, just, uh, sky finish they're providing there. The, the sign itself will be light, uh, light in color, again with translucent face and, uh, illuminated from behind. Uh, the Subaru side will have, uh, what they call a day and a night appearance. During the day, the sign will appear blue. At night, uh, the sign will appear white and again, it is a translucent face and is illuminated from behind. Uh, on the side of the Subaru, there will be a similarly styled, um, sign and emblem, uh, on, on the Subaru side of the building. And then from the rear, there will be signs, uh, slightly smaller, but similarly styled, again translucent faces, illuminated from behind, channel letters. Um, and then we have the, um, service areas, uh, parts in service on the Subaru side and service on the Hyundai side, again matching, uh, the requirements of the manufacturer. And then, um, sorry, I have to do the next. Yeah. Some of the further slides out. There are three existing monument signs there and the only changes proposed, there's no physical changes on the ground, there's no relocation of the sign. There's a single panel which currently occupies a space. That panel will change its color and the orientation slightly of the letters and the logo, but otherwise no changes. So we're incorporating those panel changes. They represent less than fifty percent of the total square footage of the sign in all three cases. Um, and then the final sign is just how, um, it will appear from Russell Avenue. There's a Fitzgerald logo, um, on either end of that particular, uh, frontage. Uh, and again, Hyundai and Subaru with, um, emblem and, uh, letters, nameplate are located with the fit small, a large oval in the middle. And that represents the signs.
Great. Great. Any questions on the sign package? All right. Anything else to present or are you, okay.
No.
On the, on the facade treatment, is that a, um, a, a, a brand specific or a brand dictated or, um, parent company, I guess dictated, uh, package? Or is that something you, you put together kind of side by side? What's the, the materials, the colors, is it shapes?
The materials and colors are manufacturer specific.
Mm-hmm.
The site adaptation is how to work with your existing building.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So there's a certain branding component to that that's-
Very specific.
Trade dress. Okay.
Very specific.
Very good. All right. Any other questions?
No. I just think it's funny. There's a Honda parked in front of a Hyundai.
Oh. Is there anyone in the audience that was going to comment on this? I think it's all just, uh, related to hooks. Okay. Um, so Greg, what's the recommendation?
Um, staff recommends the planning commission based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings and staff recommendation grant SP dash seven three nine zero dash twenty sixteen Fitzgerald Lake Forest Auto Mall Final Site Plan Approval finding in compliance with section twenty-four one seventy and twenty-four one twenty-four dash two twelve, the city code with the, with two conditions.
Great. Thanks. You know, you just, you just lucked out the, the historic preservation ordinance we just updated, made sloping ephesus historic. And you got it just in time.
That's not yet effective.
No. Listen, um, where does this fall in the timeline for the parking garage? Is that going to happen all at once or does this happen and then that comes along later? Or what's the, how does this project play out?
Since I'm up here, I'll offer the general answer to that and if we need to phone a friend, we'll phone a friend.
Okay.
As the project has been divi-
There's no money in it.
No, that's a different show. Um, we are working on those drawings. Uh, so as we've divided it up into pieces, the parking deck, all the stormwater, all those things related to that. We are anticipating a submission of all of that and I think, and I think three to four-ish weeks. So I believe we'll be back in front of you in October?
I'm thinking more about construction. So will all that happen at once or do you want to move forward on the facade and then you'll come along later and do the, the site work and the-
Correct. And some of needing to do the site work is managing our own site, uh, and what we need to get done in terms of parking and, and getting some of those pieces done in order, as well as allowing access to our customers, to the building and still being able to sell cars while we work around it.
Okay. So it'll happen in phases. You'll do the facade work first and then come back with the rest. Okay. All right. Any concerns with the proposal tonight?
No.
Looks good. Looks good. Um, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chair, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings and staff recommendations, I move we grant SP dash seven three nine zero dash two zero one six Final Site Plan Approval finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash two one two of the city code with the two conditions that were, um, presented to us.
Second. It's moved to the second. At all, and please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Looks good. Good luck with the, with the project.
Thank you.
And look forward to seeing you back here with the site.
Thank you.
Um, next up is from the commission. Lloyd, can I start down there with you, please?
Uh, just want to let everybody know it's, uh, school's back in, as everybody probably knows. Be very careful out there. The kids are out there waiting for the buses in the morning. And, uh, the new rules or the new cameras that are on the buses now, be aware of that. Driver, do not pass a blinking school bus, no matter where you are. If you see the blinking lights, don't go past. So just want to bring that up to everybody's attention. Other than that, that's it.
All right. Phil, anything tonight?
Nope.
Danny?
Um, I just noticed that coming here today, and I, I talked about that as I got here, um, right at Clopper Road and, um, First Field, you know, we had that, you know, that really quick rain. It was just totally flooded. And I was just wondering, could we go to the state or something and see if there's an issue? Because I thought that whole area was, was kind of fixed up and we, we looked at the stormwater going in that area. Uh, maybe it was just too much to take at one time, but it was just, it was, the whole intersection was flooded this evening.
A lot of times the pipes get clogged.
Uh-huh.
And so that's been the issue the last two times it flooded it.
Oh, okay.
The pipes were clogged. And so we will be contacting the state, um, about cleaning up the pipes.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's it.
Good. All right. Good stuff, Lee.
I just want to, um, basically let anybody, everybody know that, um, the, um, City of Gaithersburg and the Kentlands Committee Foundation have partnered on a lecture series, um, that will be starting on September seventh, uh, twenty-seventh at seven thirty PM at the Arts Barn. We will be presenting Colin Green, who will be speaking on, um, the efforts that were done back in two thousand seven on the Kentlands, um, Downtown Master Plan. And the title for the, um, lecture, I believe it's, um, Kentlands and, um, and the evolution of a neighborhood. So I just want to let everybody know, um, please be there. Plan to be there.
What time?
Seven thirty.
Excellent. Who, who is present? It's a conjunction with the city and?
Yeah. It's a partnership between the Kentlands Committee Foundation and, um, the, uh, city. It's actually the planning, uh, department, uh, City of Gaithersburg Planning Department who's sponsoring this event.
That's worthwhile. That's good. Right here. Um, can I, oh, I'm sorry. Is any, okay. Um, Marty, Trudy, can I ask for our next meeting, um, we revisit and just get an update, maybe a little bit of a sketch on what the calendar looks like for, um, the master plan updates that are, that are, that are lurking out there. I know for the summer, things quieted down a wee bit, but we're starting to get, um, I think polled for some joint public hearings and some other things. I want to see if, if, uh, the master plan worked, um, how that's going to begin to play out. Cause I know when we first started talking about it, it looked like in early twenty seventeen for at least one of the elements to be wrapped up. And that means some work is coming, I guess, right?
Sure. Yeah. We, we're currently, Rob's, the Long Range Planning Group is working with, uh, Parks and Recreation Culture and, uh, we'll get you an updated schedule on that.
Yeah. And maybe just kind of map out how, how this is going to play out. Cause I think we wanted to look at transportation in twenty seventeen, right? So how all that begins to tumble out now that we're, believe it or not, approaching a new year before too long. That'd be great.
Yeah. We'll get you an update.
All right. Good. Um, and then I guess that takes us to, from the staff. Jump in, anybody, whichever slide wants to.
I'll maybe start with some, uh, Trudy's got some dates and stuff to talk about, but, um, I want to give you an update on the, uh, the planning awards. Um, we, despite the best efforts of staff, and I think we just did, we, we hit the timing wrong this year, had some good information out there, but did not receive any, uh, any, uh, nominations this time around. I know there's been discussion about maybe going back to the old process that, that we did. So we're looking into that. Um, just because of where we're at in the year and, and, you know, we are, I think very positively, we are very busy right now. And, and I think that's a great thing for the city, but, uh, we probably will look at this, um, with the start of the new year.
Okay.
And, uh, bring that back to you as far as, you know, what we might do to change up some of that, uh, process a little bit.
It's a nice spring adventure for us.
Sure.
All right. Very good. All right.
And that's all.
Thank you, Marty. Trudy?
Our next, uh, planning commission meeting is September twenty-first and then the one after that would be October fifth. We do have, um, joint public hearings scheduled for Monday, October seventeenth, and that's on the, uh, SDP or schematic development plan for the Crown Neighborhoods three and five. And also on Monday, November seventh, we have a, a joint public hearing on the Kentlands Apartments schematic development plans. That's at the corner of Quince Orchard Road and Great Seneca Highway. And also that night, we are also scheduling a text amendment, um, concerning restaurants.
Okay. Real good. Busy, busy couple of months coming up?
Yes.
All right. Anything else from staff?
And I just wanted to note, sorry, that, um, the, the, um, community planning staff worked very hard this week to, or this past week to get your packages ready. And this is probably the busiest agenda for staff comments that we've had in a, in a number of years.
Nice work.
Appreciate all the hard work.
And it was a holiday weekend, so thank you for doing that.
I'll just thank everybody for coming out. Two nights in a row. Me too. So I saw, knew that you were there for the-
You were pressing, pressing your luck there.
All right.
Well, thank you all.
Happy to do it. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Well, good evening.